The Mayor going out, closing services, challenging situations, people in tears, time and time again. I think this is very, very simple. We're going to take this campaign from this chamber. We're going to wait for an answer from the government. I'm not going to hold with that. But we'll take the campaign to Westminster, to Downing Street. And we're going to say very, very clearly, give the people of Liverpool their money back.
Thank you, Commissioner. And councillor Rutherford.
And councillor Chamberlain. Well, no, the Labour Party group took our responsibility very seriously. When, quite rightly, councillors challenged the economic decline, we participated, and with the Labour Party, participated in the party voting process. I wouldn't say we made a dramatic change. We made some improvements, including one amendment supporting more money for the food banks, by taxing vacant properties. That was, I know that was councillor Chamberlain accepting. I think councillor Mitchell played a part in having a fairer statement about that debate. I hear what Peter says, and I can understand the resentment at the role of the Liberal Democrat. I have to say, it's never been my favourite party. But I think we've also got to actually take ourselves one forward. If we try and strike a national campaign of just dealing with, give Liverpool a fair deal, there's a danger, if you see outside Liverpool, they would say that wouldn't work. I think there's a bigger debate, and I think the Mayor's first motion struck a chord on that. I think we actually had to reach out to every single council, including some rural councils, like me, to councillor colleagues from last week in Cornwall, who are an area of high rural working class people, who have the same problems, if not more dramatically, in poverty. But they live in a rural community, so they're actually far more socially physically isolated. I think we have to take the agenda out to every single community. Because local governance is being bombarded virtually everywhere. There are one or two shires, very prosperous shires, being given, she started, gold plate treatment. The majority of councils, including many conservative councils, are really suffering. And if we try, and I say this almost against the grain, if we try and pick over who supported a coalition, who ordered it, or who belonged to one party or not, we could actually weaken our ability to pull that coalition together. And I think we need to think about it carefully. If we are going to launch that coalition, just as I suggested when we do a coalition, and I think it is right to do so, with teachers and parents' organisations, I think we've actually missed a trick. If we didn't reach out to employers, we'd see the dangers of downplaying the services we get from education. In the case of a coalition challenging austerity, if we are going to shift the political spectrum, we will need to talk to people, knowing the Liberal Democrat councils, and which there is talk by a significant number, whatever we think of that, but also the Conservative councils and rural councils. We don't have to reach out, but we're going to achieve what we want to achieve. If we're going to change the political spectrum debate, we're going to have to reach out to people, and maybe not, even though however tempting it is, including me, by the way, including me, picking up differences which we had in the past, we may need to drop those. We're going to make a advance forward. And I say that with greater respect, but I understand where you're coming from. I probably made certain comments several years ago myself. But I think we have to look to the future, and we have to really sometimes bite our tongue and look to the future. We have to make a coalition that is as broad based as possible, to be as effective as possible. And that will have our support. I worry suggest to the Mayor, rather than that we take the resolution we passed today about the LGA, we actually do a joint release letter to the LGA magazine and start that debate. And rather than one party, we do it together.
Thank you councillor Rutherford. And councillor Oliver, please.
You can't find any kind of campaign if you haven't got backbone. And what the Liberal Democrats comprehensively demonstrate to people of this city when they're in government, the concerns is, is a backbone. Whatever the arguments about austerity, the profound unfairness your party was complicit in in government. If you had stood up in government, councillor Kemp, your party, and said, that distribution of resources across councillors is comprehensively unfair, that could have been resisted, but you didn't even fight the fight. And no one claims book that abject, that abject insult to public shame. Is it any attempt of an explanation or a apology? Of course councillor Rutherford is right. There were really difficult questions in campaign. If we knew how to campaign comprehensively against austerity, we wouldn't be where we are today, would we? But it's why it's absolutely right for this motion to put back on the table and say, we aren't going to, through a vote in a council chamber, through a group speeches, turn the tide. What we have to do is to have a ongoing conversation with the people of this city and other cities. And that's going to be difficult, and there are different aspects to that. I think councillor Cusack and councillor Mitchell are actually right. A fundamental challenge to the economics of austerity. But I like that also an argument about fairness. And there aren't going to be some difficult arguments councillor Rutherford, about distribution within this country. There's going to be some difficult arguments with Labour councils in London, about the resources that London gets and that we get. Of course, some of the councils in London are treated unfairly as well. But it's found out that more resources go to London than should, and to pass to the South East. And we need to agree to that, because what the Mayor's motion did that. So I think this motion is part of a continuing conversation. It can't be the final one, it should be. And that's what we need to have, is the conversation which we need to take place outside this council chamber primarily, not inside it.
Thank you. And councillor O'Sullivan.
It's very sorry, I missed it.
Thank you, my honour. There's this clear theme to the last meeting. We've been talking about different aspects of campaigning against austerity, and we've heard some of the impacts of austerity. And the fact that we actually had to debate the fact that children are going hungry in our city is the reason why at last council meeting, we all agreed the motion for government to introduce into the Children's Social Work Bill, that every decision that it makes in government must be tested against what impact it has on children and families. Because the cuts, the benefit cuts, the cuts the local authorities, and the early cuts that this government have made has clearly had that impact, and it shouldn't be allowed to get away with it. But of course, it did take in Duncan Smith with his self fulfilling resignation to alert us and the newspapers that austerity is a political choice. Because we knew that already, didn't we? We've been arguing, some of us have been arguing that since 2010. And Paul Brunkman actually said exactly at that time, it's jobs now, deficit later. We knew perfectly well that at our relatively low level of national debt, we were able to sustain what we were doing if we invested correctly to get our country back on its feet, because it had nothing to do with overspending. It had everything to do with the fact that there was a lower tax pay because people have become unemployed and are claiming benefits. I'll just give one tiny example, corporation tax. Corporation tax, for the biggest companies in this country, has been reduced by 28%, by 28%, from 28% to 20%. And that means that the likes of our banks in this country, even when you include the money they have to pay through their bank levy, are paying less now in tax than they did before the last government came in. That's what you do when you make political choices about resources and spending, the decisions that you need to make. That should be in the interests of all people in our country. I was in the chamber in 2012, I've not been elected as a councillor. I'm sorry that councillor Kemp is getting so much attention tonight. But I remember when he was arguing about the fact that austerity was necessary because of the condition and the state of the British economy. And then at the same time, he was saying that Kemp, together with, was meeting with Cable and Clare, like some grotesque remake of Last of the Summer Wine, were going to meet each other to ask for more money for this city. Well, that fell on deaf ears, as we've seen in the abject publication that councillor Monday just referred to. So, local government is no state bureaucracy. It's the nearest thing, apart from probably the National Health Service, where people have a relationship with the state and the public sector. What we do and the things that we talk about regularly, in our social care, in my brief for children's social care, in youth clubs, and in the streetlights and the roads that we have in this city. This is the relationship that it has at a local level, because they are some of the most important things that people in our lives have to deal with on a daily basis. So cutting local government absolutely goes to the fundamental interest, against the fundamental interest of most people living in local authority areas, not least this city. So yes, we do need to do a campaign and take it to the Prime Minister to explain that we want a fair settlement for our city. And Theresa May saying that there should be a fairer settlement in this city, but she must listen to what we are saying, because we are saying, and I move, it's Liverpool, give us our money back.
Okay, I'm going to ask councillor John Bush to finish up this today.
I feel a bit scared standing up next to me, it was after that. No, 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 actually, it's not that often that we have been, especially. But I think, I think, I think there's been a number of things that have been said here, all which are absolutely right. We do need to come together, there does need to be a campaign, it does need to go to the LGA. But it also needs to hit right our Number 10s door. We need to be banging it down, and we need to say exactly what I just said, give us our money back.
Rutherford, I'm going to take the vote now. Those in favour. Unanimous, good. Wonderful. Right. All right, so we've got this one now. Item 14, student landlords and the city's taxpayers' tax accounts. Laura Roberts finds the next one. Now, just, just a minute. This is going to get dead messy, because there's three amendments here. So I'm asking you to be really, really patient with me. So the first amendment is from councillor Tom Croom. Now, okay. And then the second amendment is from councillor Richard Kemp. And then the third amendment is from councillor Frank Colman. Is it the addendum? Okay, that's good, so we can just treat that.
I'm aware of the addendum of the removal by councillors of small. I'm satisfied with that, so.
I'm satisfied, thank you.
I will withdraw my amendment.
Well, that makes my so much easier to answer. Well, I'm so grateful, thank you councillor Kemp. Right. So.
We also agreed that if the proposers can clearly state that the motion, as amended by councillor Rutherford, would not lead to student hardship, we will withdraw our amendments.
I'd love to be able to say it doesn't lead to student hardship in Liverpool. You know, I think that's beyond my reach. The addendum is, the addendum is an attempt to take cognizance of the points raised by other councillors, including councillor Kemp, and show that we are listening to what the students, the universities, and the landlords are saying, and that we will set up a group to, you know, to take notice of those views as we move forward.
Do you want to move a motion then? And then, sorry, sorry Laura, sorry, it's yours, yeah. Do you want to move your motion then, Laura?
Thank you, thank you, Lord Mayor. We heard a lot tonight about the increasing financial problems faced by the city council, and by many in the city due to the Tory government quodding about austerity. We've heard about families and children who are going hungry. Yet the changes still to come are not just more salami slicing on top of massive cuts that we've already faced. It's not things that can just be patched up with bits of change here and there. We've still to face, always been posed, a fundamental shift in the whole paradigm of funding for local government. Lord Mayor, I did not vote for this Tory government, and I doubt anyone here did. We do not agree with the cuts to our city, as many of my colleagues have spoken very eloquently about tonight. And we don't agree with the austerity agenda. But at the moment, we're having to work in that environment and help our city grow and prosper and grow its economy. Colleagues, this chamber will have heard me speak many times about private landlords, and especially about student landlords. I've spoken in particular about the life profits some of those make, and the lack of responsibility for the local neighbourhood and communities that some of those landlords show. Colleagues will also recall, I hope, if they will listen, my prayers for this administration's attempt to curtail some of that rampant free marketism that we witness in our city. I've stood here, Lord Mayor, and I've praised the Bank of Holland tall ads in my board, which used to light my ward. Thank you very much for the devoting, Rachel. I've stood here, Lord Mayor, and I've praised the landlord licensing scheme, which we had to fight for against the Tory government. We had to fight the landlord lobby for that scheme, and it's a shining example to our local authorities. And I was stunned when I saw that my criticism of that scheme in one of the amendments. I've also stood here and I've made requests for further controls on houses in multiple occupation. Again, I've got the support of our colleagues across, across the chamber. Lord Mayor, we have to try and find a way to help ensure that those who are making profits in this city and are not currently paying their way do start to pay their way. But that's not just things that we can control within our own administration and within our leadership here. So what is this motion asking for? As I say, we cannot impose a business tax, we don't have that legal situation. What we're asking for is for letters to be written, for organisations and national contracts to be made, to start a debate. Because, Lord Mayor, if we do move to a situation where the city, where the city has to go to 100% devaluation of income and to complete localisation of business tax, then we can't support over 10% of the population who currently don't pay counter tax, also not being covered by any other form of income. We need to look at new ways of doing things, and we need to look at who makes profits that can contribute to that. So the businesses who are making a profit, who currently are exempt from local taxes, must be asked to pay their share.
Now, I'm going to take councillor Croom's amendment now. Are you happy? Are you going to move your amendment, or are you going to stop it?
I will, I'm going to. I tend to withdraw my amendment, but I'll speak to the motion. Shall I do that now? Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you. It's just been sent over there. Okay, so, well, again, we've welcomed the amendment by councillor Rutherford. And the reason that we withdraw our amendment is because it does address our two main concerns, which were that the cost would be passed on to the students, and also that there wasn't any confrontation with students or student bodies, which looks like this is going to be addressed now. And we never actually dispute the fact that the council does need to raise income and maintain its revenue base as best it can. We don't dispute the fact that students put a demand on city council services. And finally, we've been supportive of the introduction of the landlord licensing scheme, which aims to improve the condition of the tenants in the long term. But the problems we have with the motion include the fact that, as is stated, we felt that landlords would pass on any cost to their tenants. This is a detrimental effect on students, particularly those with poor backgrounds who are already struggling with costs. Furthermore, students have already lived here by several, several increased costs in recent years. 10 years ago, tuition fees were just £3,000 per annum, and now they're £9,000. Student maintenance grants have been reduced to real terms in recent years and have now been abolished for new students. And bursaries for nurses have also been removed. This council has a proud record, protects residents who can least afford increased costs. The council tax support scheme is still in existence, long after it was abolished in other local authorities. Student landlords are already beginning to move, set up and move on due to tax changes announced a year ago. Additional costs arising from the imposition of business rates would undoubtedly mean that many will be the same. Another concern is that we felt that passing this motion would send a signal that the city was anti-student. The world of higher education is fiercely competitive with universities doing their level best to attract students. In support of this, the council has done a great deal to improve facilities and infrastructure in the last quarter. But this good work could be unknown by negative publicity created by the council passing the motion as it previously stood. So, that notwithstanding. Thank you very much.
That used to happen to me, but it's that XSD, won't be actually. I make the usual picture, right? How's the next one, are you seconded?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. This motion is about exploring options, localist options, to address a particular problem in Liverpool. And in this city, one in 25 homes are student homes. The value of the council tax exemption for those student homes comes to £10 million a year. And by 2020, that's a cost that we will meet ourselves. It's right that we're working with universities, with student representatives, and with landlords to try to bridge that gap in a fair and progressive way, and in a way that reinforces our wider housing strategy. And it's right, Lord Mayor, that we're asking the government for new powers to address some of these issues. Lord Mayor, the communities that I represent will bear the brunt of doing nothing about this. There are huge problems in places like Kensington Fields and the city centre with large student populations that the city council mitigates through our frontline public services like street cleansing, refuge collection, community cohesion, noise pollution, street lighting. And we do that while private landlords, many of whom are absentee landlords, take what is often obscene amounts out of our city. In Kensington Fields, they're converting three bedroom terraced houses into six bedroom student HMOs. They're charging £95 a week per bedroom for 48 weeks of the year. That comes to over £26,000, and it often undermines those communities. The final issue I want to raise with this, Lord Mayor, is around the issue of rent controls and how this will impact on students. It's high time that the universities stopped, the universities stopped advocating their responsibility around this issue. The University of Liverpool is the single, single largest student landlord in the city. John Moores University has a different problem, but they commission student places through private halls of residence. They allocate the policy, they allocate places, they control who lives there. They have a significant amount of influence over the market. They can stop the rents being raised, they can stop these costs being passed on to students. They can influence the rest of the market because they're so big on this. And we want to work with the universities to do this. So the final appeal that I will make to everybody in this chamber, to the Green Party, to the universities, to student representatives from the Guild and from Liverpool Students' Union, is work with us to try to address these problems. Work with us to bring in the extra resources that we need in this city. And do it in a progressive and fair way that taxes the landlord, that brings rents down, contains rents where they are at the moment, and doesn't pass those costs unfairly on to those who are least able to pay that. Work with us to do that, and we can solve these problems.
councillor Rachel Overton.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. As the former president of the Liverpool Students' Union, I really welcome this room, because it is about regulating the market and taxes a way that for us to do it. And this is my phone's lock, which has my little tongue, sorry. Landlords and student landlords are businesses. And like any other business, they're expected, and I believe they should be expected, to pay their fair way. When they take out of the public realm, it is their duty, and it's our duty to make sure that they come back into it. And that's a huge part of it, I really welcome that you've, that you've taken your amendments, and that the Liberals have taken their amendment, and that as a City Council, we're going to work with representatives to ensure that the standards of student accommodation is improved. I've still got a lot of friends that are students, some of them I just, just don't want to ever leave university, which isn't, I just don't understand. But they never want to leave university. And when I still get contact with them, even though I don't represent a student team yet, about concerns that they've got with their landlords, landlords that are not looking after the property, landlords that are not pulling their fair weight, that they're not roofing, and that involves things like when their waste collection is, they're not fixing simple things like the lock on a front door. So there are huge things, huge problems that we have to deal with, in terms of student landlords and landlords. And a big part of that has been the landlord licensing scheme, and there was a lot of worry from residents and from landlords that when we change the scheme, it skyrocket people's rent, it will be directly passed on to them, and it wouldn't improve standards. And I can say that as a representative of our home trust, where we have got people who rent, that standard is improved, and my case where I can show for that. But also a lot of my friends who are just like foreign students are actually seeing a much noticeable difference in their standards. So I think that's extremely important. And I think what is extremely important, and something that I'm proud that we have done as a Labour council, is about regulating the market, because the market won't regulate itself, because it doesn't, especially in a capitalist society, and we have to recognise that. Unless we come in and regulate it, there is every concern, and there is always the risk that will be passed on to the end consumer. Because as my elite vegetarian partner says, you can have cheaper meat if you do not regulate afterwards, but you will be lucky if you get horse meat. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thanks, Rachel. And councillor Oliver.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, all across this space initially, people pay property taxes. Residents pay council tax, and businesses pay business rates. And when people or businesses cannot afford to pay, they can get relief, whether that's business rates or council tax reductions. It's a fairly simple and straightforward system. Straightforward, that is except for the occasional anomaly. Anomalies like student landlords. Student landlords would easily make up to £1,500 come off in a rent for a four bedroom house. Even if they just rented for 10 months, that's £15,000 a year. And we know that although students only save for these 10 months, they're often charged on for the full 12 months. That's £15,000 for a property that's often snapped up for a surplus of £60,000. Colleagues, property prices in the South East are between three and five times as high as they are here in Liverpool. Yet the average weekly student rents in the North West are less than £15 a week cheaper than in the South East. Quite clearly, there are student landlords in this city who are making vast profits, or who, due to changes in local government funding, are paying on a penny back to the council in tax. How can this possibly be fair, and how can this possibly be reasonable? These are businesses which rely on public services. They rely on the council to collect their bills, they rely on the council to clean the streets, to keep the roads repaired, to keep the streetlights on. If their property is subject to vandalism, they can call on the police. If their property catches fire, they can call on the fire service. They can rely on public services in exactly the same way every other business in the city does. But they don't pay a penny in council tax for doing that. So I ask you again, how can this be fair? How can it be fair to other businesses in the city whose business rates subsidise the services relied upon by student landlords? Or the residents whose council tax has helped the student landlords to stay on healthy profit? I've heard people say that this is a tax on students. I absolutely disagree. Students use businesses and commercial services all across the city. Bars and clothing shops, boot shops, and mobile phone companies, hairdressers and wifi providers, and stage three stores that support buses and trains and taxi companies. All of these businesses pay business rates. Even universities pay some business rates. The idea of businesses should be exempt from business rates because of who their customers are. Simply does not make sense. Colleagues, Liverpool is a city that's always welcomed students. Liverpool is a city with a long history of fighting for the rights of students and listening to the voices of students. Last year, when we were considering launching the future of the student accommodation in the city, we not only invited students to give evidence to the excellent committee, the councillor Frank Honcher, but we actually gave them an equal seat around the decision making table. This is not an attack on students. But there is no benefit to students that allow some landlords to get rich on broken, inflated plates of profits, while vital local services with or without. And we need to remember, we often talk about converted properties, HMOs, but lots of the student accommodation going on in this city is being done by property developers. We're talking about subsidising property developers. And I would also implore you not to listen to the scaring ring coming from the opposition when they talk about massive rent rises. That simply is nonsense. And I know you would expect it from the opportunistic leftists, who seems to go more and more right wing as every day passes. But seriously, from the Greens, you do know that you're supposed to be a sensible party, don't you?
No.
Increasing the rent on property would increase a rateable value. And as a result, landlords having to pay more business rates. In fact, business rates could even act as a driver for landlords to keep their rent low, reducing the rate of value of their properties and keeping their business rate to build down. And of course, whatever landlords had to pay in business rates would ultimately be tax deductible when it came to settling their corporation and income tax bill with central government at the end of the year. Finally, colleagues, let me be clear. Should unscrupulous or greedy old city landlords decide to pass these costs on to students, we will not stand idly by. Colleagues, by this time next year, we will have Colleagues, by this time next year, we will have our own house and business. If student landlords will not provide students with a decent accommodation at a low price, then we need will. Thank you.
We've got the sit down, Frank, did you want to speak to the end, Laura here? Quite happy to let it go.
Thanks, Lord Mayor. I think I said everyone wants to speak before about it, trying to encompass the views of all involved.
Okay, all right. So we've got no more speakers, so we'll chat the vote round, that's okay. Did, 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 sorry. Oh, Laura, sorry Laura, sorry, I'm getting a bit late now. Do you want to mind up this debate?
No, just to thank everyone for their support and in tune to your position, thank you.
Brilliant. Okay, we're now going to take the vote there. I can't believe this. Right, so it's on substantive motion, so, push the agenda, yeah. And those in favour?
Three.
Is it unanimous again? This is all really good, it's something that happened to anyone. Okay. 15, promotion circular, I can invite councillors Tom Croom, Horace Grant, Sarah Laddington, and Keith. Can you invite councillor Craig to the motion, starting in the next minute?
Lord, Lord Mayor, can I just say that we would support this motion?
Okay.
It's without full ceremony.
Gotcha.
It's a very fast, we have a whole lot.
I will take this, read that, you're happy?
Read it.
Excellent. So, moving swiftly on, cross party motions. Can I advise that in accordance with standing orders 7.211, agenda items 16, 17, 18 have been recommended by the whip, indicating that they have cross parties involved. Are those motions agreed?
Agreed.
Okay. Motion for the Select Committee, Lord Mayor, that's me. To advise that agenda items 19, 20, 21, 22, and 23 have been referred directly to the appropriate select board. Can I thank you all for an amazing evening.